Alright, so on the agenda, I have the presentation regarding the funding objectives for the American Rescue Plan. And Rista is going to, I think, sign on as a co-host, so she can do a screen share.
Yeah.
I don't see that she's done yet, though. Okay, good. David Oliver did contact me and indicated that he wasn't available. Yes. I'm just gonna check with Rista, can you hear us?
I can, yep.
Were you able to download what I emailed?
Yeah, so you ready for me to start sharing?
No, let me get through a couple of other things and then we'll call on you. Thank you. Okay. Item number one on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4E of the City Council on WPCA Meeting Rules of Procedures. Thank you, Councilwoman Riewett and Secretary of State, Councilwoman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to address the council at this time? Seeing and hearing none, I'll move into item two. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held August 16th, 2021.
So move.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
And Secretary of State, Councilwoman Riewett. Questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three. I'm gonna move into this presentation. And again, thank you, Rista, for doing the pinch hit for us here. I have a paper copy at your seats here. But for anybody that's tuned in, I wanted them to be able to follow along as we go through the discussion. This discussion or presentation this evening is just this high-level overview of what the American Rescue Plan funds can be used for. And based on our early conversations with the Long-Term Recovery Committee that was established as part of our pandemic response, and meeting with Torrington Development Corporation, meeting with our health provider partners, Hartford Healthcare, Community Health and Wellness, Torrington Area Health District, Chamber of Commerce, we were pulling together a clear understanding of what the funding objectives would be for the American Rescue Plan and how we could best utilize these funds in a way that benefited the community as a whole. Obviously, it's $10 million, and while $10 million sounds like a lot of money, when you actually start to put that money to paper as to what we could do with it, it does disappear rather quickly. So I'll move right into the next page. How much funding the city received? So as you all know, the city of Torrington is supposed to receive the sum of $10,974,000. Our first tranche of funds came in in June of 2021, and that is $5,377,000. Our second tranche of money, the second half of this, is anticipated to be received in June of 2022. The municipal funds must be obligated prior to December 31st, 2024. So when I say today's discussion is just this high level, how much did we get and how do we get the biggest bang for our buck? This is what I would consider a conversation, but a conversation with intention. You know, the point being, we're sitting on this $5 million, and there are businesses and not-for-profits and infrastructure improvements that can happen. But we want to make sure that there's transparency, that the public has an opportunity to hear what we're thinking about doing and provide us some input on what we can do. The funds must be spent prior to December 31st, 2026. So as you can see, we have almost five years in which to spend the funds. It doesn't benefit anybody for us to sit on the funds for that long. These are all designed to recover from the pandemic, so our goal is to be mindful, to be planful, to get the funds out as quickly as we can. But if a project is going to take a few years, it shouldn't present a problem as long as we're fine within the timeline. In addition to the city's $10 million, the Torrington Board of Education also received, separate and apart from the city, The city, because we are what is called a non-entitlement unit, meaning we're under 50,000 in population, has an annual reporting process that begins, our first report is supposed to be filed by October 31st of 2021. The Torrington Board of Education, however, has a different filing responsibility or obligation, and they have already submitted their spending plan with the State Department of Education and agree that they've already implemented a lot of their plans with the $6 million that they've received. So the next slide, funding objectives. I think from the moment I received this document in May, the US Treasury issued a 150-page guidance document called the Interim Final Rule. This document is supposed to be filed up by a final, final rule. It was our understanding that that document was supposed to be issued by mid-September. We have not yet received that document, so we're still working on this interim document that came out pretty quickly after Congress voted on this piece of legislation. In that guidance document, it is clear that the funding objectives must support public health response, replace public sector revenue loss, address the negative economic impacts, provide an opportunity for premium pay for essential workers, sorry for the typo on that one, and it could also be used to improve water and sewer and/or broadband infrastructure. For the next slide. Taking this guidance document, we went through every single sector or every funding objective. The first one being obvious, obviously, if there was an opportunity for us to replace any public sector revenue that was lost as a result of the pandemic, cessation of any public services, we wanted to make sure that we recapture that because once recaptured, there were fewer strings on how it could be spent. Gave us more latitude, and during the budget process, you may recall that I spoke quite frequently about hoping we could identify those revenue losses and free up some of that money. Unfortunately, both the GFOA and the National League of Cities provided us with guidance. We kept coming up with, to the same conclusion, that we had not experienced any loss of revenue as a result of the pandemic, I think mostly because our tax collection procedures, private tax collection, we get 100% of the tax. But also, we don't have those amenities that some of the other cities have, such as a public golf course or other public amenities that result in a tremendous revenue stream. So based on a complete review and conversations with our auditors, we are quite confident that we have no lost revenue, at least for this first year. We'll revisit it to see if there's any impact in the subsequent years. So next page. Premium pay for essential workers. Some of the qualified examples were that we could provide directly or through grants to third-party employers funds to provide a premium pay, a stipend, or some remuneration for the high risk that was presented by their employment during the pandemic. Those key sectors included healthcare, grocery and food service, education, childcare, sanitation, and transit. They wanted us to prioritize low and moderate-income workers. And based on our analysis of all of this, we felt that at least at this level and presentation, that we were going to make no recommendation to utilize these funds for this purpose. Again, as I said earlier, the goal is to establish funding streams that will provide community-wide impact through focused investments that will improve health systems, strengthen social care during a pandemic or other emergencies, and create pathways for business sustainability and job creation. So revenue loss and premium pay, we peeled off of the funding objective list. Next page. Support for public health response. Qualified examples are services to contain or mitigate the spread of COVID-19, including vaccination, medical expenses, testing, contact tracing, quarantine costs, and capacity enhancements. Included in that list would also be behavioral healthcare services, including mental health and substance misuse treatment and crisis intervention. The in this health response, also, we could utilize funds in an equity-focused service, in equity-focused services that would be broadly applicable to our qualified census tracts. Qualified census tracts are those lower socioeconomic demographics. In the city of Torrington, we actually have three census tracts that would have qualified under this. When I talk about in this first line, or the first two lines, capacity enhancements, just as a reminder, during the pandemic, quite early in the pandemic, when the hospital was being their resources were being exerted and it became evident that they may need to provide off-site stand-up facilities for patient care, for vaccinations, and for testing, our armory became that overflow facility. And I met with emergency management staff, Torrington Area Health District, Hartford Healthcare, and went through the building, and they quickly determined that it did not pose the right complement of facility amenities, and we moved the sites up to the East School, which was under lease at Advance. This required a little bit of a two-step, quick meeting with Board of Education, meeting with Ed Advance to talk about how the building could be accessed for these emergency services. Both the Board of Education and Ed Advance were extremely accommodating, completely understood the severity of the crisis. But through this whole adventure, we pretty much came to the conclusion that we really don't want to use our school buildings for this type of service, mostly because our concern was we will be putting patients into that building. And if the crisis or emergency declaration was lifted and kids were allowed to go back into the schools, we would be impeding on the ability to reactivate that school building. So when we talk about capacity enhancements, you'll hear me expand on that a little bit going forward. So next slide, please. The Torrington Spending Plan. This is where I'm going to start sharing our proposal for the council's input for us to digest over the next two weeks and for us to decide how to solicit that public input. So we wanted to look at the equity-focused services and qualified census tract during the budget deliberation. You will recall that the Board of Education was seeking $969,281 increase in their operating budget. And a part of that operating increase covered English-as-a-second-language teachers, pairs, and tutors, and social workers at both the high school and the middle school to address re-engagement and emotional support. During that budget deliberation, we identified the possibility or potential of using $569,281 of the ARPA money to cover those expenses. That is roughly 6% of the total municipal allocation. It's in addition to the $6 million that they've received directly for their ARPA distribution. This fund, you will recall, a few weeks ago, the council did approve the funding of this and the establishment of the board's access to those funds. And I do believe that the Board of Education has already been putting these funds to good use. So those funds are committed and being expended. Next slide, please. Infrastructure improvements that directly respond to the health emergency. This is where all of our department heads came together to look at what is it that we needed to do during the pandemic? What do we need to do post-pandemic to prepare or harden our facilities so that should there be another variant or another occurrence, that our buildings would not be quite so susceptible to needing to be shut down entirely? Those improvements that were identified at this level were ventilation improvements to the public buildings, including but not limited to the Sullivan Senior Center, our fire department and police department, the Emergency Operations Center, ventilation and ADA access and other capacity enhancements to the armory to accommodate testing/vaccination site and flexibility for city, Charlotte Hungerford Hospital and Torrington Area Health District to stand up emergency and overflow facility needs. We also identified that as a part of the response to the health emergency, Charlotte Hungerford has a continuing need to establish temporary public health clinic facilities for booster vaccinations, but also to continue outreach to the community for general health outreach. So many of the worst cases of COVID were the result of comorbidities, you know, whether it was, you know, a lack of continuity in healthcare, heart conditions, diabetes, you know, all of those other afflictions that compromised the system for anybody that was, that had contracted COVID. So we wanted to work with Charlotte Hungerford Hospital to be able to provide that service to our community. And again, these expenses are for the Torrington community and Torrington residents. We also, in this level, department head level, recognize the need for IT improvements to council chambers to provide high-quality, remote access to public hearings, facilitating virtual or hybrid board meetings, commission meetings, and public hearings. Tonight is a perfect example. You know, we're relying on, you know, a staff member to sign on as a co-host so that we could do screen shares. So there is a much better IT virtual meeting that we can be implementing, and we've already started doing some of the research on what that would cost. Emergency management and public safety radio system was identified as an urgent need. This was clearly evident in recognizing that the enhancement of interoperability for the enforcement of executive orders, communication with schools, communication between Torrington Area Health and our public safety sectors. I'll share a quick story. Early in the pandemic, right after one of our council meetings, my phone was starting to blow up because there was a member living in one of our congregate living spaces that had been diagnosed with COVID and decided that he was going to leave the hospital against medical advice. He made his way back to the facility, not facility, to the apartment complex where he lived, and then he sort of fell off the radar, and we couldn't, we couldn't move fast enough to identify that number one, he made it home, number two, that he was, you know, that he was in his apartment, that if he needed any assistance, healthcare, food, anything, that we were going to be able to mobilize those resources. And certainly, any of the touchpoints between the front door and his apartment would need to be dealt with immediately. I was on the phone for three hours that evening. It was, it was crisis of communication. I'll make a call. I make, you know, I text three people, they call me back. If we had had this radio system with this interoperability, it certainly would have made all of that communication instantaneous, and everybody would have been on the same call. So I do think that this is a worthy investment. It's something that we have had in our city budgets every year for the last three or four years. It's always something that ends up being cut or reduced significantly, and we've been sinking funds. This is an opportunity for us to get that project done and moving forward with it. Through the through the experiences during the pandemic, working with our Fish Shelter, Friendly Hands Food Bank, Department of Housing, Department of Public Health, we recognized that there are a lot of, I call them, social care providers that needed to make significant changes in their delivery of services. You know, our homeless shelter, you couldn't have 12 individuals in the same room. You know, we had to decide how we were going to decompress those facilities, how we were going to, where we were going to place them, and who was going to be responsible for those. And we kept track of all of those communications, and they were daily. It was 90 minutes a day on the phone with all of these organizations. And we quickly identified the need to provide or to undertake a feasibility study that will do the asset mapping of the services that are offered here in the city, identify the gaps and/or the overlaps and the potential collective impact of co-production or co-location of some of those nonprofit human service agencies. I've had conversations with a number of those agencies. They all agree that, you know, that they think that they would all benefit from having a clear understanding of who's doing what, you know, and where could there be economies of scale or efficiencies with a co-location? So we want to use some of these funds to do that feasibility study. We'd also like to spend some of the funds to do a feasibility study on our public safety complex to improve the emergency response, whether it's a storm, a pandemic, or any other emergency in the city. Interoperability was really rose to critical need. So this feasibility study, I believe, will benefit the city in determining what does that look like? How can it be accomplished? And how do we move forward? Again, you heard me talk about this quite a bit during the budget cycle. And the final thing on infrastructure is water and sewer infrastructure improvements. This made it into that legislation, I think, as a result of, I think it was in Michigan where they have that lead, the lead pipes and the lead in the water. So this sort of got embedded in this, this piece of legislation. But I see this as a benefit for the city of Torrington because we do have two property owners that Rista and I have been meeting with over the past year to talk about the development of an industrial park or a business park. And of course, one of the hurdles is, is there sewer and water and gas that goes to those properties? So we wanted to set aside funds that would be able to facilitate moving those projects forward, creating jobs, getting our people back to work, and relieving some of the stressors of the economic impact of the virus. So next page, please. Torrington, oh, before I move toward off of that, you'll see that our proposal, based on our first blush assessment of what it would cost to accomplish these objectives, we're looking at about $5.3 million or 53% of the, of the funding to make these improvements. And then the response to negative economic impact to the community, we're looking to utilize $3.6 million or 37% of these funds to push back into the community to assist our businesses that were significantly impacted by the shutdown, to provide our not-for-profits, social care providers with resources to create new programs or or enhance existing programs, to provide the nonprofit organizations that are, I call them our business nonprofits, such as Kids Play and Warner Theater, Nutmeg Conservatory, Torrington Historical Society, our Five Points Center for Arts, that were also impacted. So our goal with these funds would be to establish a grant program that would allow these organizations to submit an application for a mini-grant from the funds with an explanation as to how these funds would be used to mitigate the negative impact that was experienced within the community. Part of that also requires human resources, somebody that, an administrator that can help guide those applicants, vet those applications, make recommendations to the council on how those funds would be distributed. So we're calling that that grant piece, this community impact grant. And we're thinking that it would be best to utilize the services. I, through the whole pandemic, kept saying, let's grease the wheel, not reinvent the wheel. Somebody else does this, and they do it very well. Let's push this to those organizations. And this is a perfect example, and I'm recommending that we consider using our Northwest Community, Connecticut Community Foundation for Public Giving. Is that the whole name for that? Northwest Community? Already very well skilled at this, you know, and we met with Guy Rivezi to have the early discussion as to whether this was within their bandwidth to do so. I'd like to continue those conversations, but wanted the council to know where I was going with it before I got too far ahead of myself. Included in this funding stream, we would like to fund a community resource navigator. This would be an individual, social worker or otherwise. That would be, whose sole purpose would be to assist our residents to access state and federal assistance programs, such as Unite CT, fuel and rental assistance, legal aid for evictions, work legal aid for evictions, workforce training programs, access to food resources, SNAP programs, or any of those programs that already exist and have already been infused with considerable resources as a result of the American Rescue Plan. But they don't know how to find those programs. They don't know how to apply for those programs. So this community resource navigator would not be an employee of the city, but we would work with the right organization to determine how, where does this person fit best? Is this a mobile, a mobile position that maybe is up at Woodland Hills in the community room on Monday and at the chamber on Tuesday and at Cole Park, you know, on Wednesday. But this, we see the benefit of this community resource navigator is that individual who's going to know these programs, know those application forms and be able to provide those, that information and assistance to the residents. Rista has already started working on a workforce development program. And we're thinking that a portion of this $3.6 million would also provide a opportunity for us to infuse the community because in this, in all the funding objectives, healthy housing was one of the priorities. The, what the federal government recognized is when we sent all of our children home and they were confined to their homes, if the home was not a healthy house, if there was lead paint, if there was asbestos, if there was mold or any environmental concern in the home environment that compromised their health, further exacerbating any impact that COVID may have. So we've reached out to the Torrington Area Health District to talk about utilizing a portion of these funds to establish a healthy homes initiative, something that they're, as I said, well skilled at greasing the wheel, not reinventing the wheel. And the benefits that come back to us is healthier homes, healthier children, and, you know, improvements in general in the community. The final piece of the spending plan is because this, this requires an incredible amount of grant administration reporting back to the US Treasury, a number of filings, tracking hours, tracking, tracking the funding streams. So we are proposing to use 4% of the funds to offset the cost of any of the grant administration, reportings, filings, legal advice, tax attorney or accountant. And while that may be a little bit high, I'd rather err on the side of caution and set aside enough so that we're doing this properly. And at the end of all of this spending plan in 2026, the US Treasury doesn't reach back and say, you spent that incorrectly, send us our 10 million. So I think this is a safety net bringing, to bear the experts in their field and interpreting, interpreting this guidance. So that's what we did at this, you know, internal level. And our thought process after this evening would be to look to the council to agree to spec, to schedule either a special meeting or set aside a portion of our next meeting on October 4th for the sole purpose of soliciting public input on this proposed spending plan. You know, I'm thinking if it's a half an hour or 45 minutes, that allows the public to, you know, kick the tires, ask some questions, press a little bit about what we're thinking those expenditures would look like. During the next several months, we'd also be looking to create those grant parameters for businesses and not-for-profits. You know, what we kept hearing from all of our social care providers is, you know, these frequently grant applications are exceedingly complicated and it requires additional resources for them to expend to fill out a grant application. Our goal here is to get the money out to the public to help recover from the pandemic, not to complicate their lives by having them, you know, demonstrate, you know, three quotes for, you know, for expenses or tax returns and all of that. So we're looking to do something that holds everybody accountable, meets the standard for reporting through the US Treasury, but also doesn't overcomplicate the application process. And under that, I'm thinking as next steps would be to identify those administrative partners, such as the Northwest Community, Connecticut Community Foundation. So I don't know, Rista, did you want to talk a little bit about the workforce development piece of this?
Sure, I can. So everybody has, I'm sure, have heard that there, everybody's looking for work right now. But we kind of, we focused on the industries that were struggling to find employees before the pandemic made worse because of the pandemic and are still struggling to find those employees. And those two areas were daycare and manufacturing. Now, I think if other industries come up through this public process, we can certainly include them. But those are the two that we're looking at. And what we're looking to do is similar to that resource navigator, bring in a person that can connect people to jobs, you know. So right now, we have 1,300 manufacturing jobs that are open. When you do an Indeed search or you look, it's overwhelming and it's time consuming and people are really struggling to find out what jobs are there, what jobs they should apply for. Either they don't have the technology, they don't have the education, they don't have the transportation. So a person can talk with the businesses, find out what are the skills that people need, then connect those, the people with those skills to those jobs. And more than that, they can connect them to training opportunities that are out there and transportation opportunities. You know, with daycare, not only does this help our residents get back to work, it provides a capacity for our daycare centers that are looking to hire people, but it can increase their capacity. So as we fill more of the other jobs, people have places to send their children. And this will help the manufacturing fill the jobs that they have open. And it's a variety of skills, everything from their HR positions and office positions, engineering, right down to working on the production floors. So that's our idea, working with our partners in this. We've, we've talked with the Chamber of Commerce, we've talked with Workforce Investment Board with our Manufacturing Coalition. And this is really the, the top need that's come out is just connecting people to those jobs. And that's what the proposal that I've been working on is for.
Thank you, Rista. So floor is open. Again, this is just, you know, the kickoff for the discussion. So questions, comments, thoughts, additions, deletions?
I have one comment. Interesting, when we were on the page on the spending plan and we were talking social care providers, I made a note to myself, possibly a social services coordinator because we don't have that. And then on the next page, it was community resource navigator and that tied in with what I was thinking. And also I wanted to add, that person should be bilingual.
Yes.
We need, we need to have more ability within City Hall as well for bilingual employees who can help with some of our.
I will tell you that that was the one position that both the feasibility study and that position garnered the biggest response and enthusiasm. So.
I did, you know, on the premium pay for essential workers. I know Recreation Department had a difficult time getting lifeguards. You know, is there any, I know it isn't considered a recommendation, but is there opportunity that some of this might be actually allowable under this
So the, the problem that we had with the lifeguards wasn't the pay. We budgeted $65,000 to hire lifeguards. We had plenty of money to pay the lifeguards. The problem was there are no lifeguards out there.
No, I remember the whole presentation and it's like, we need to be more competitive. I know Waterbury paid a little bit higher than what we were starting at or wherever, whatever Brett had said, but you know, just remain competitive. I just sure wasn't sure. And then also with the transit, the Northwest Transit, are there any thoughts of partnering or having any of this money go towards vehicles, transportation, anything that might be in need for that? And then the other, you know, I thank you for this because, you know, people have been asking me, what are we doing? So, but I do, I do think that the piece, you know, when you do have a public hearing reaching out to the nonprofits within the community with this concept plan, specific to how it could engage our social services. Assistive technology keeps coming up as a huge piece for people who are living independently. And there is, I mean, this is, this area of technology has gone wild in a really good direction, wild in a good direction. You know, everything from, you know, med dispensers to lifting, I mean, lifting toilets. These are the goal. So I, I just think having the public hearing, you're asking, that's a good idea. I think it's an excellent idea, as long as we communicate in a timely way to players that this might impact, you know, particularly our social services. So thank.
Excellent suggestions. Yep. Other thoughts?
Oh, Mr. Kevin.
Yeah, a couple of things, Mayor. First of all, beginning from the beginning here, the Board of Ed allocation here. I'm not sure where this number was derived from, but I, I know we have a major problem with financing and funding for ELL in our, in our schools. And I understand, I, I know from personal experience, there's been, you know, huge input of people buying property in Torrington in the spring, summer, and now to the fall. We're coming up from New York, Brooklyn, Bronx, and largely, and very, very many of these are Spanish-speaking families. And they no doubt will be bringing a, a large number of children into the system. I know I've heard there's, you know, been over 200 additional kids from when they were last running together their numbers at the end of last school year. So I just think, you know, we always have this problem where we spend a dedicated sort of grant of some kind to hire teachers, parasiturs, and then once the grant, you know, is over, when, when that funding's over, the Board of Ed is stuck with then continuing to pay for those additional teachers. And I would like to see more thoughts on, on how that is, once we hire the additional people to again, facilitate and work with this clearly expanding cohort of students, where the funding is supposed to come from for all those added professionals? That would be number one. My other, my second thought was social care providers feasibility study. No, it wasn't that, my mistake. It's somewhere earlier where we thought we did not need. We did not want to put money toward healthcare workers, essential workers.
Yes, yeah.
My, my recent experience with a member of my family who was in a nursing home for, for many years was that we are woefully short of the number of healthcare workers we have in those facilities. They are grossly in my opinion, but also in the opinion of most, I've gotten to know them really well from having spent an awful lot of time in those, in three, count them, three different facilities. And those people are extraordinary, extraordinary, extraordinary people, what they do. And it's sort of, it's, in, in many ways, it's because of the kind of people they are, that they don't push as hard as they should. Someone like me, you know, who would push for, you know, adequate pay for what they were doing. And, and my personal experience is an awful lot of them, maybe most of them, in some ways could take advantage of. And I know there's a shortage to the extent that so many of these workers in these facilities literally are not taking what we would consider normal vacations because there's nobody to backfill for them. So they take these extended, you know, kind of crummy vacations, these three-day weekends and multiple three-day weekends, which is not the same thing as a vacation, which is designed to clear your head, clear your body and your soul to continue with this extraordinarily difficult work. They're not getting that. And yet they come in and they come in and they come in. I, I would like to rethink that we do something. I, I've asked our state rep to look at this in more detail. I think it's high time somebody in, in, in an organized and coherent way looked at what we're doing for our nursing home workers. Because clearly with baby boomers accelerating the trend, that's going to become increasingly more difficult and challenging function within the city. And, and I sure as hell don't want to keep taking advantage of their big hearts. So, and, and my final thought is this, Mayor, and, and I know this is not specific to any one thing, but my, my overall feeling is an awful lot, I, you, you're addressing very specific needs right now in this, and I, I get all that. And a lot of it seems to be in some ways overlapping. And it just feels to me like if we step back, we're looking at Torrington as in many ways a town that is driven by social services and people who cannot right, cannot literally fend for themselves in, in many different kinds of ways. And so an awful big, big chunk of all this money is going to band-aiding problems in a very significant way. It's a big, big chunk of ultimately taxpayer money. You know, this is not, this is not Joe Biden's money and it's not Kamala Harris's money. This is taxpayer money. This is taxpayer money, always is. And I, I would just like to think that instead of looking at all of the various problems in front of Torrington, just, just as a, as a, as a way of, of looking at how we might also consider these funding priorities. Instead of just managing poverty within Torrington, which is an awful lot, let's face it, it's an awful lot of what this is. It's managing poverty better. What, what I would like to see is what if we looked at funding new curriculum within our schools that will do some of what was mentioned earlier, providing the kinds of really, and not just, again, expanding on what we give to the Board of Ed, but in, in different ways, expanding our ability to train kids in coding and robotics and the kinds of technologies that you know, people, again, the way it was supposed to be, students graduating from our high school, they have skill sets that they can then put out into the marketplace and get jobs. And then they won't need all this assistance. They won't need all these taxpayer-assisted housing and the food and the, the care and, and all this business. They can, you know, support themselves. And I would just like to think of this chunk of money, how that could, how we could use funding a, I, I advocated for this a year ago when the school, the, the proposal to build a new school. And I said, you know, the brick and mortar is not going to solve the fundamental problem of Torrington being an aligned school district. It is not. The new, the brick and mortar itself and glass, that is not a new curriculum that is designed to a new economy with excite, with courses that inspire kids and, and, and make kids understand that there are job opportunities for them, really well-paying jobs, portable jobs, jobs that, that can provide for themselves and their families, that, you know, those kinds of things are out there if they just apply themselves. And I think we could use a good chunk of this money working with the Board of Ed to create some kinds of curriculums and, and with our, you know, with our, our friends in manufacturing to help design that curriculum. So once again, it's not constant, constant. This is, and I understand why you're doing this, Mayor, because no one else, because it's not getting done in any other way. And, and I would just like to see the emphasis on, you know, training our citizens to be able to fend for themselves and not just smarter, more efficient ways of doling out social services. So that's a big bite, I know, but I would like us to look at that going forward. I really would, from that perspective, and see what we might do differently with all of these, this prioritization. You know? I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right. So then I'm thinking October 4th, if we just dedicate maybe the first half hour of that meeting and solicit public input. This document is up on the, on the website. It's on the agenda on the website. We can put. It's on the agenda on the website. We can put this under that spotlight section on the webpage. And just encourage people to go and take a look at it. Yes.
I, I, you, you put, you, you put an option out there of having a special meeting. I would have a special meeting.
You want a special meeting?
Personally, I think this is huge. And I, I think what you will get, I think what we will get. If we advertise, if we promote this and invite the public, I think we're going to get an awful lot. I think we're going to learn an awful lot about what's on people's minds. About this stuff. And, and I, I would very much like, so we're not worried about, you know, all the other normal. Routine stuff that we have to do. We could really focus on this. I, I think this is that important.
I would agree. I think sometimes it gets lost when you're doing it within a regular meeting. To have the opportunity to just speak on that one topic would be important.
Special meeting?
You know, I like the idea of a special meeting on the same day as a council, whether it's, you know, an hour before. I think, you know.
So start a meeting at five and.
Or even four thirty. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying the time, it just, you know, I think who you're going to attract hopefully. Are the people who actually could benefit from the concept of this plan. And, you know, to Paul's point, I think. You know. Restrictions of the use of this funds, you know, are such that it sounds like the department heads have been. Scouring through what ways they can do it within those restrictive guidelines. So. I think it's a good first draft. I think it does need.
I think if we have it too early, we might have people who are working. I don't want to do it too early. But also, we never know when that one person is going to come along with that question that we all didn't realize was out there that might be helpful.
There's always that opportunity, I think, in a public hearing, Sharon.
Yeah. And this is, this wouldn't be a hearing. This would be.
Let's structure it in a way that you don't have one person monopolizing.
Right.
I hate to say that, but you know.
No, but if.
If I work for a social agency, I might take that half hour. So we're doing a three minutes, you know.
Well, we usually do a, a time limit on a public meeting. Don't we? Three to five minutes is usually the average. I mean, I don't know if we have a hard and fast rule, but.
Yeah.
That people, we could say that, you know, people would be given X amount of minutes that evening.
And even encourage to submit their questions or comments in writing if they can't make it.
Yep.
Yep. All right. So, special meeting. I'll.
What would this, if you want to do it the night, the same night?
October fourth.
Well, like five to six thirty.
Yep.
That seems reasonable.
Now or now.
You know, even if people are working till five, they can get here, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes.
Right.
Certainly catch the drift of the meeting.
Perfect. All right. We'll arrange to do that. And I'll get some, some further clarification to the. To what you're asking about whether or not the funds can be used, municipal funds can be used for curriculum.
Okay.
As you say, I know the Board of Education received their six million dollars. And then. I think that they have a little more latitude with their six million on those kinds of expenses. But we'll get clarification. I'm not going to pretend.
There's something in here about workforce development. I mean.
Yes, yes, there is.
If we could sort of tweak it under workforce development, which is literally what I'm really proposing. You know, workforces and, and making spring loaders and, you know, like my father used to do. It's, it's along the lines of coding and.
Thinking with workforce development, that in addition to daycare and jobs, manufacturing, healthcare workers might come under that. Purview as well.
Well, childcare.
The other thing that you were talking about.
Yeah. Childcare was very much a part of the, when we were talking about the grant funding. We did recognize that was one of the industries that was significantly impacted. I just saw another childcare center is closing. When you talk about the healthcare providers and nursing homes and health facilities. Childcare also became a victim. So.
Yeah.
That is very much a part of that three point six million dollars that we were looking at.
And those essential workers.
Yeah. All right. Then we'll leave this where it is. Push it out. We'll put it up on the website under the spotlight section and remind the. Public that we're waiting to hear from them.
October fourth.
October fourth, five to six thirty. All right. We're going to move right into a presentation on the cultural district official designation. And I'm not sure if Rista's still on. I'm here. So, um. I, I sent you all a presentation that was given last Thursday on our cultural district, a proposed cultural district. And we have a link to it online, so I'm not going to go through the whole presentation again. It's, it's available for you to, to take a look at. And I would like to just answer any questions that you might have at this time. You know, and just a, a quick background on it, you know, I was talking to Sharon even before the meeting. And our Arts and Culture Commission had been, you know, trying to find a way to, to do some kind of cultural district, arts district. That never really came to fruition. Then in October of two thousand nineteen, the state passed legislation that kind of gave a pathway. To a state designated cultural district. And by the time the applications came out and we kind of got our heads around it. The pandemic hit and it wasn't the right time to do that. Still very much something we had always wanted to do, and then continually reinforced at our. Long-term recovery meetings, you know, our businesses, our nonprofits are telling us we need help with marketing and, and to stay alive. So a small subcommittee got together and pulled together this. Cultural district is proposed that you will hear about in the meeting. And I think with the maps that I've sent you. Rufus from the Warner, Judy from Five Points, Eileen from Kids Play. And Steph from Northwest Arts Council, really the hub of that. We also worked closely with Nutmeg and Mark at the Historics, Historical Society. To make sure we were encompassing the whole area, getting all of our assets, both arts and culture, cultural assets into this. And I think that it's pretty well thought out. We do not need to make a decision on this tonight. We would like to have a decision by October. So we can schedule a walkthrough. We need to submit our application to the state. And then after they get our application, they'll schedule a walkthrough. We're hoping to do that whether, whether we're still nice in the fall. And, and move forward with the application. But I'm here to basically just answer any questions. You know, and then next week, or next meeting, an October fourth meeting, if you want some more time to review it. I'll come back and answer any other questions you may have. Thank you, Rista. Questions or comments?
And I've shared this with Rista before the meeting. I was away on vacation, but I, I zoomed into that meeting and it was an amazing meeting. And having been on Arts and Culture in two thousand twelve and for several years after that. I know that we were trying to find a way to bring focus on the growing arts and culture community. Especially after we established a temporary art gallery, which is now known far and wide as Five Points Art. So I think this is excellent. Since then, I had an opportunity to talk to Matt Pack at Bad Dog Brewing when I was there. And I said to him, I was, I was sharing with him that he was listed actually twice on the list of. Places to go, once as a venue and the other as a historic site. And he was so excited to see something like that happening. So. I want to thank you, Rista, but also the committee that gave so much time and effort into doing this.
Other questions or comments? All right. So, as you heard, Rista, our thought process is, you know, presentation today, discussion, time to think about it. As you're out and about, hearing some feedback from the community and on October fourth. We'd like to put this as an action item for the board to act on so that we can submit the application to, to D C D. And. Start that process, their review process and their, their. Tour of the city. All right. If there are no other questions, then I'm going to move on to item number five. I'll entertain a motion. By the City Council, acting here in as a W P C A to approve the following payments from fund number four ninety. Sanitary sewer capital improvements. Invoice to rate Pierce Engineers for four thousand nineteen dollars and twenty-two cents. And invoice to Yield Industries for three thousand four hundred. Thank you, Councilwoman. Second by Councilwoman Wagner. Questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to C G S, section twelve dash one seven nine. To release the liens described in Attorney Michelle's memos dated September seventh and September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. So moved. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated. September seventh and September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion. By the City Council, acting here in as a W P C A to accept the recommendation of the tax collector. And authorize a sewer use refunds indicated on the list dated September seventh, twenty twenty-one. So moved. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner. Second by Councilwoman Rabino. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Wagner, all in favor? Any opposed? Looking on the screen, is there? Twice. Anything from W P C A, Mr. Towsy?
No, everything's good. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything, Mr. Drew, for the, from Public Works?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Corporation Council.
No, thank you, Mayor.
And City Clerk's Office. Nothing. Good. All right. I know, really, she wants to make a motion to adjourn. Item ten, I've been here since six thirty this morning. I'm with you on the adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor members. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner. Second by Councilman Waldron, all in favor? Any opposed? To my left, Councilwoman Kevin Arrow.
Yes, Mayor, two things. We're missing the second couple of comments. Is that just an oversight with our new?
Haven't done it.
I know. We haven't. You know, when we started doing the hybrid meetings, we did wrap that one off. You want to bring that one back?
I, I think so. I mean, transparency and all that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's good. And there were two, Mayor, I, I, I know we've been down this before and I, I really don't want to make a big deal about it, but is there some way? We have two people out here, the, the dailies, who continue to look for some response from us regarding their proposal for East Albert. Is there some way we can at least acknowledge what they're asking? And if, if their idea is not good, then, then let's hear why. And certainly the council will support what you think should happen with them. But I, I would like to see some closure here, is all I'm saying.
Absolutely, yeah. I know that Corporation Council, myself, the dailies, the chairwoman from Fanning. Or, excuse me, Park and Rec met to discuss this. And I don't know, Vic, if you wanted to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, we met on the subject and I did respond to the dailies with regard to. The position I felt the city should take, and that is that it is a. Their request is basically falls under the jurisdiction of the Park and Recreation Department. They've met with them. The Park and Rec Department has denied the request. We don't have basically real oversight. Over Park and Rec. And if you start doing that, then you're going to become another Park and Recreation Commission. So that's basically in a very simple nutshell where this falls. And they've appeared before the Park and Rec on a number of occasions, as I understand it. And we were told that their proposal was unacceptable to them. So I don't know. How far you want to go to second guess another committee or city agency.
And I, I would, you know, concur that, you know, we do have members of the Parks, Parks of Rec. If we start, you know, addressing this and we, I think all appreciate the zealousness of, of your requests and your application. But it doesn't really fall under the purview of the city council that does go with the Parks and Rec. So I appreciate that you did respond and. Continuing to have, you know, the communication directed at the council, I, I don't think is going to get. Get what you need or want, you know, from the Parks and Rec Commission. So, thank you for coming.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Kevin?
No, no, as I understand it, there was a process in place. The process was followed. I understand you don't like the results of that process. But, you know, at the end of the day. At, at the end of the day, a, a city council has to abide by certain rules and regs about what we can and will act on and what we can't. Because then it just becomes, the, the system just deteriorates essentially, you know. There needs, there, there needs to be boundaries and, and there needs to be boundaries in place about what we can and cannot act on. And I know you're citing past examples and I can't speak to those, okay, of why that occurred or why that didn't occur. But in a proper functioning. I, I think system. Established boundaries need to be maintained. And there was a process and that process did not give you the result you wanted. And an end run to the city council, I don't think is a precedent that I'm hearing the city council wants to establish. So I, I, you know, I abide by what this council is telling me they have already done on its behalf. And at least as far as I'm concerned, until you come with a different process or a different proposal that has run through the appropriate departments. I, you know, there's not much I personally can do. And I don't think any other council person is prepared to do. I'm truly sorry. I know I strongly feel about this, but there is a process and the process seems to have been followed already. And that would be it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ruette.
Yeah, I have nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Rabino.
Orange Committee met today. Kind of table three out of the four, but the fourth one, oh, we want to bring forward for public hearing. It should be a very quick one. It's just the changing of the date of the parking from November to December. It shouldn't be a big issue. It should be like nine, three minutes, probably. More paperwork involved than the time it's going to take. So if you want to do it on the fourth, or if we have time, if not, we'll take it to the next meeting.
I think we should do it on the fourth.
Yeah, it's just, it should go very quick.
Since it means moving it from November first to December first. So do you want to make a motion to add an agenda item to, to make that recommendation?
Yes.
All right. So I heard a motion to add to an agenda, an item to discuss and schedule a date for a public hearing to amend. Ordinance number, you have the number? What, ordinance regarding?
Parking ban date range.
Okay.
My second.
All right. Actually, I heard some motion by Mr. Rabino, seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. I have to call that to get two thirds to agree to add it to the agenda. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. And then the motion is to schedule a public hearing to discuss the change in the ordinance. Regarding the.
Winter parking day, date range.
So a motion made by Councilwoman Rabino. Do I have a second to that? Second by Councilwoman Wagner. Oh, I'm sorry. I said, I said, schedule a public hearing date. Ten, four. Yeah.
Second as amended.
Thank you. Questions on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Nothing else, Mayor.
Okay.
I, I too would like to thank Mark and Holly for persisting and, and coming to the meeting tonight. And, and we all got your email, your letter. And, and I appreciate all the work that you've done for this and, and where your hearts are with this. And as Paul said, there's not anything we can do when you've gone to the department and that decision has been made. However, you have pointed out that we may have a need to look at our recreation activities in the future. So who's to say something might not change? But I just want to thank you for all your time and effort and for sitting through our meetings the way you did. Thank you.
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to run through a real quick list. Sorry, Carol. Just a reminder that the Penrose groundbreaking ceremony is Thursday at two thirty at Franklin Plaza. The governor will be here, as will the deputy commissioner for D. The governor will be here, as will the deputy commissioner for D E C D, commissioner for the Department of Housing. Representatives, Cook, Case, Horn, Witcos Minor. So. Some level of. Dignitaries will be present for that. Also, the same day, that's Thursday, the twenty-third, the Northwest Economic Development Commission is holding an economic summit. This will be located at the Five Points Center for Visual Arts. Center for Arts. And this is a regional discussion about economic development. Again, I believe the governor is supposed to be there, as is Commissioner Lehman from D E C D. I will be, just for your information, a panelist at the C B I A Forum. On September thirtieth, rebuilding Connecticut's Main Street. C B I A's connect, this is. Yes, thank you. So I, it's, it's a little bit of an honor that they've invited Torrington to represent on this, recognizing. What we've done prior to the pandemic to restore our Main Street and during the pandemic to support our local businesses. Building healthier communities, facade improvement program. Our first round of grant applications have been received. I met with Rista this morning to review. We have over twenty applications and that's just for the first round. We believe that there may be opportunities that some of these funds actually may qualify. Under the Business ARPA. Grant fund that we have. It's, it's clearly with the twenty applications oversubscribed. But we don't want to turn any of them away because they're all really good projects. So you'll be hearing more on that in the, at the next meeting or the meeting after that. Silicon Ranch presentation, I believe Councilwoman Kevin Arrow asked to bring Silicon Ranch. To the council to discuss the solar project on Highland Avenue. I was able to work with them. They will be coming to the council. I think they'll be zooming into the meeting on October eighteenth. To make their presentation. Our new comptroller, Robin Stenzial, started here in the city on September seventh. I've met with her a number of times as we make our way through the audit process. She's doing a phenomenal job. But I again want to just say how grateful we are that Alice Prue is with us through November nineteenth. So I have the benefit of that institutional knowledge and that protracted training period. The splash pad at the Bessie Pond Pool Area is just about complete. And we'll be looking forward to seeing that amenity activated next year. Oktoberfest, which has been organized by Ed Canata and Rachel Kelly. Is this Friday evening. They're looking at the weather prediction, a little concerned that it may be rained out. So they're, they may be utilizing their rain date, which is Sunday. Our Prospect Street improvements, the bids were returned on September first. Our engineering and public works department have reviewed those and are forwarding the same to D O T. Because this is a state-funded project for their review and approval. So in the coming weeks, you will probably see. A. A presentation on awarding of the bid. And in regard to the teen center. Great news, the Board of Education. In collaboration with Ed Advance. And through a state-funded L E A D. Leap, thank you. An L, L E A P leap program, grant program. Will be providing two staff members. Ten hours a week. Six computer stations, twenty iPads, desks and chairs, all to be housed within our teen center. And the LEAP, I forget what the acronym is for. It's. It's designed to provide those supports. To the disenfranchised student, you know, somebody that is maybe not coming back to school. And instead of, you know, trying to reach them within the school, they're actually going out into the community to bring these programs. This is a phenomenal, great opportunity. And I'm grateful that the Board of Education. Recognized that the teen center is the right place to bring that at, at this point in time. Yeah. Uh, I think that's it. That's all I have. No questions? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruett. Seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.